Yeah, made all kinds of spirits.
Hi, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to Durham's special town meeting. Just a couple of articles and minutes before we get started, please silence and turn your phones off. And also, that microphone is going to pick up the whole room, so just be courteous to people.
How long is open on?
We started recording 10 minutes ago. Okay, can we please rise for them, please?
Let me introduce you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to Durham's special town meeting. I will now raise the greeting. Kimberly Garno, resident of the town of Durham and resident of the county and state of Maine. Greetings, in the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Durham and said county and state. Qualified by law to vote in town affairs. To assemble Durham Eureka Community Center 606, call over to Durham Maine. On Tuesday, August 16th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Then and there to act upon Articles 1 through 6 as set out to wit. Article 1, to Tuesday moderator to preside at said meeting. Do I hear any nominations for moderator?
Nominate Bill Schneider. A second.
Do I hear any other nominations?
Please.
Here are no other nominations, I declare the nominations closed. Bill Schneider has been nominated. Can I please have the written votes for the moderator?
We have right choice voting.
I declare Bill Schneider the moderator for this meeting.
I'm going to now recite the oath. In the municipality of Durham, Maine, on 16 August 2022, I, William J. Schneider, do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, so long as I shall continue a citizen thereof. I, William J. Schneider, do swear that I will faithfully discharge, to the best of my abilities, the duties incumbent on me as moderator of this meeting, according to the Constitution and the law of the state. And I will sign this.
I will now turn the meeting over to Mr. Schneider.
All right, thank you very much. I want to introduce myself just a little bit first. I'm Bill Schneider. I live over on Rough Rider Road on the west side of Durham. It's off of the Stackpole Road. And I have an old farmhouse that has a great view over fields and forests. And it's just my little slice of heaven. I've been elected and sworn in to be your moderator tonight, and I will discharge my duties faithfully. Jessica Ollery asked if you would turn off or silence your phones, and I'll ask you then. The first, I'm joined tonight by the select board on my right and the budget committee on my left, both of whom have drafted and worked on these articles that we're going to vote on tonight. I would move that we adopt the main moderator's manual as a guide to procedure for our meeting tonight. It lines out, it's kind of like Robert's Rules of Order, but it lines out the procedures for town meetings like this. And it will be a useful help if we adopt it. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the main moderator's manual for the guidance to the procedure of this meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, does anybody object to adopting the main moderator's manual for the purpose of this meeting? Okay. The main moderator's manual is adopted because nobody has objected. We have a couple of non-residents who may find it necessary to speak at the town meeting. And we can, the residents can allow them to speak by voting by two-thirds margin that we want to allow them to speak. Here are the specific people that may have cause to speak tonight. Mitchell Berkowitz, Robert Tripp, Calvin Beaumier, Alan Plummer, Janet Bowie, George DeBarge, and Jerry Douglas. I move that those people, non-residents, are allowed to speak at the meeting tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the issue? Okay. If everyone who would like to allow these people to speak, raise your green card right now. And everyone, please put them down. Everyone who would not like to allow these people to speak, please raise your green card. Okay. By more than two-thirds margin, the town meeting has decided to allow these folks to speak at town meeting. Now, we're going to go through these articles. And the general procedure will be that there will be a motion to adopt the article. There will be a second to adopt the article, and then we'll have a chance to debate. And so, debate or discuss it, if you wish. So, I would ask that only one person at a time will come up to the microphone and be ready to discuss the article. And that you wait until I recognize you before you speak. And when you speak, I'd like to have you introduce yourself by name and tell us where you live. When you're speaking, speak to me. And if you have any questions, ask the questions of me. And I will try to find an answer to the questions. Usually, I'll turn to the select board or the budget committee or somebody who has more information about the question to get the question answered. I'd like to take this moment to introduce Jerry Douglas. Are you a stand-up, Jerry? Jerry Douglas has been hired to be our new town manager. And he comes with a great pedigree. He's worked in Gardner for quite a while. And I'm really, personally, I'm very excited to see him here. I think he's going to be a great addition to the team in the office. And I can't wait to have him start on Monday.
Thank you.
And now I'd like to recognize Kevin, if you'd like to say a few words.
Yeah, very briefly, just I want to thank you for those of you that are coming out tonight. Beautiful summer night in Maine. I'm sure there's a lot of things that people would rather be doing, but really, these are really important meetings, and having the public involved is important. So, thank you for making that effort. Hopefully, everybody grabbed an info sheet on the way in. It's one we published a few weeks ago to get some information out there. But it may answer a lot of fairly basic questions about ARPA and what the funds can be used for or not. So, that is available to you. Tonight, so on ARPA funds, as the sheet says, Durham received a little over $420,000. And there are some things we can or can't spend on. If it's pretty much, though, if it's got to do with capital expenditures or operating the government, it's a good chance we can use ARPA funds for it, the way they structured the program. So, tonight, we have a handful of articles that staff and town manager brought to the board. And these were things they considered, like, you know, we, these are more short-term things that need to be done in the short term and really can't wait until a vote in April. The most pressing need being the heating situation at the town office. So, taking the opportunity to ask the question on a handful of mostly capital projects to get the ball rolling on that. And then later this fall, and that will use somewhere between 25% and 30% of the ARPA money. I can't remember the exact figure, but a couple of times this fall, we'll have additional public hearing meetings where it'll be, instead of the must-do stuff, what are ideas people have that they'd like to see done with the remainder of the money, which will be, you know, around, we have a thousand dollars or so. What do we want to do with that? And that'll be a little bit more blue sky, a little more optional. There'll be some choice points there. But tonight is really about kind of keeping the wheels on the wagon and keeping operations rolling at the town office. And, nope, I guess that was already, so that's all.
All right, terrific. Well, we'll dive right into the work here. Article 3 on the warrant is to see if the town will vote to appropriate $23,230 from coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, aka American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds, received by the town from the federal government for the following project, HVAC work at the fire station. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve Article 3.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 3 is approved. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Everyone who would like to see if the town will vote to appropriate $23,230 from coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, aka American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds, received by the town from the federal government for the following project, HVAC work at the fire station. If you wish to appropriate that money, please raise your green card. Thank you very much. If you do not wish to appropriate that money, please raise your green card. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded and voted in the affirmative that Article 3 passes to see if the town will vote to appropriate 20, no, the town has voted to appropriate $23,230 from coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, aka American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds, received by the town from the federal government for the following project, HVAC work at the fire station. Onto Article 4. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $34,500 from coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, aka American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds, received by the town from the federal government for the following project, HVAC work at the town office. Do we have a motion?
I move we accept Article 4, present.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that Article 4 is passed. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir. Please introduce yourself.
Pierre Gaston Gay, Durham. I got some questions pertaining to the system that will be installed.
Sure.
What is being installed? Has there been a cost analysis for not just installation and purchase of the product, but also long-term, over the life of the system for this system that you're installing? Because there were some questions about this at the last town meeting, and you didn't answer.
Is it, well, I didn't have the, no, no.
Referring to somebody else.
Is anybody prepared to answer the questions?
Prefer to town manager.
Mr. Moderator, I have, I had some input that's realistic on that.
Terrific.
The heating cooling load in the town office has not changed. The requirement for the heating and cooling system is the same. So, there's no increase in energy costs to heat and cool the building. So, the system itself is a little bit larger. There may be a little more electricity involved in turning the motor, relatively minor. And you would think long-term maintenance costs will be a lot less than what we had.
So, you're not installing something new and completely different?
I need you to ask questions of me.
You're not installing something new and completely different, like a heat pump or, you're just reinstalling another furnace?
Mr. Berry or, oh, Mr. Berkowitz, sorry.
For clarification, what we're talking about is two New York AC units, one furnace replacement, and a smaller hot water heater that will actually save us money instead of heating large amounts. And that's at the town hall at the fire station. We're talking about two Samsung units and one ducted off, that are ducted through the offices. In essence, we are getting more efficiency with some less dollar, operational dollars.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
That does.
Terrific, thank you. Would anybody else, yes, ma'am?
My name is Debbie Oliver from Cottage Woods Road, Durham. I have a question on the, this system that we're installing. Does it, we talked a lot about revising the town office, its arrangement and whether it was suitable for our needs right now. Is the, will this plan impact that? Was the plan for the town office considered, you know, in the end result of the cost of the system? Yeah, future growth, yeah.
Is anybody prepared to, Mr. Berkowitz?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The attempt here is to replace in kind. And when you're putting in 2022 units, this year 2022, there's going to be some good longevity there. This will give this community time to now think through what they will need in the way of space to operate their local government and serve the public. And it may be additions, it may be complete tear-down. I have no idea where you're going to go, but it'll give you that kind of time to anticipate building something bigger because you are, like, you're not growing.
Yes.
I could just add on to that. The changes that have been discussed so far in the town office are pretty minor. It's more like reconfiguration. Like, the biggest change that's been considered is using what is currently the meeting space for office space. And if that's the case, it's really no different in terms of, you know, heating or cooling. It's just being used for a different purpose.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Terrific. Anybody else have anything they'd like to say or questions they'd like to ask? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the vote. You're voting to see if the town will vote to appropriate $34,500 from coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, aka American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds, received by the town from the federal government for the following project, HVAC work at the town office. Everyone who would like to appropriate that money, please raise your green card. Everyone who would not like to appropriate that money, please raise your green card. Okay, by overwhelming majority, Article 4 passes. The town has voted to appropriate $34,500 from coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, aka American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds, received by the town from the federal government for the following project, HVAC work at the town office. We'll move on to Article 5. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $45,000 from coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, aka American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds, received by the town from the federal government for the following project, communication and information technology upgrades for town office, public works, fire station. Would someone like to make a motion?
Move acceptance of Article 5.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, Article 5. Is there any discussion on Article 5? Yes, sir.
So, this is, like, once again, Pierre Gaston Gay, Durham.
Where do you live in Durham, sir?
Stackpole Road.
Oh, Durham.
You're asking to replace all of the computers within this town. Is that correct?
Would anybody like to address that?
It, possibly. At some point, they'll all need to be replaced. I think it's fair to say that there's still work being done in some aspects of this gathering specific cost information. So, the goal at this point would be to prioritize what's most important to be done within this area at town office. And things like, you know, firewall work or things of that sort, like data security issues. And then, you know, if we, if we could, if there's enough money left to buy, you know, replace all the computers at once, perhaps we would do that. If not, we would do what we can. And if there's more work to be done in this area, then there might be another question on, at the April town meeting about some additional work that might be needed in this area.
So, I am, I have been within the sales system most of my life. And I know that you do not buy all new equipment of one particular item at once. You always buy in waves. That way, you don't hit the, our town for 50 grand every three years for all new computers. And do we really need as many computers as we currently have? And would it behoove us to take some of the computers that are currently there, continue to use them in a lesser application, such as maybe a parts department, instead of in the town hall where they're getting heavy use? And replace just a few of our computers as opposed to spending as much as most normal people make in a year on computers?
Is anybody prepared to answer, Kevin?
So, the board, actually, I think it was in our last meeting, we actually raised the same point about, well, if you replace them all now, is that set, which, and let's keep in mind that the money that we're talking about here, it's, you know, it's, it's like bonus money.
Oh, no, 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 no. Comes out of my pocket.
I think I have the floor right now.
Okay.
It's, it's bonus money in the sense of it's not raised from local property taxes. It's obviously tax money, because everything that comes from the federal government was tax money at some point, right? So, but there's, but it's, it's this pool of money that literally the government dropped in our lap. And we have a certain amount of time to spend it or lose it. Now, we've got a pretty long runway right now. We have until the end of 2024 to officially allocate the money to specific purposes. And then we have until the end of 2026 to actually, like, have the money be gone from the account and be spent on what it was. So, but back to the rotation question, the board raised that same concern. And we spoke about that, you know, we want to set up, much like we did with fire department gear a few years ago, where we replaced a lot of it at once, set it up on a rotation so that some of these new computers might go four years, some might go five, some might even stretch to six, so that we can set up a rotation where there's a regular small number being replaced year after year. But in upfront, when the upfront cost to replace them all is not being borne by local property taxes, it's a unique opportunity to take care of that need at the town office, in the view of the board.
And Sir Mr. Berkowitz would like to answer as well.
Excellent question. And we debated on and on and on. Ironically, the computers seem to be the antenna, the lightning rod for the discussion. Prior to the purchase of the computers, and not all computers will get replaced, we're dealing with issues such as firewall protection that we really need to have. There's replacement of other hardware that has to get done, not on computers, but the communication devices that you folks rely upon so that we can get information from our meetings out to you rather quickly. I'd like, Mr. Moderator, to call on Devin, who can better explain this, because quite frankly, one of the most weakest points in this whole discussion has ever been raised, and that is the age and the lack of capability of our phone system. And this is part and parcel of that infrastructure. So, if the chair wouldn't mind, I'd like to have Devin complete that.
I have one comment for that.
Well, let's, let's hear from Devin, and then you can, you can comment on all the answers.
Hi, everyone. My name is Devin Garno. I'm the Information Technology Officer. I want to stress that not all of this money is for new computers. Primarily, it is going to be used for new phones and better internet connectivity at not only the town office, but also at the fire station and public works office. So, that will cover a little under half of the money to get all that stuff up to date. The rest of the money will be used to get mission-critical computers. Stuff like at the town office, what the ladies use at the window, those will get priority because they see the most use. We will begin to cycle new computers, not all at once, but based on need. But unfortunately, before, the computers were purchased in bulk. So, we're dealing with all of them being old at the same time. So, I would like to set up a cycle, but we don't have them currently.
Devin, in case somebody here hasn't met you, could you tell what your role at the town office is?
Yep, I'm the Information Technology Officer.
Yes, sir.
So, to your comment, yes, it is tax money. And as much as people wish to say it's free money, the Fed is a giant chunk of my paycheck every week. Did anybody look into leasing computers as opposed to buying?
We planned to do that, sorry, can I answer that?
Please.
That actually came up at the last board meeting as well, and that's something we're going to look into as well. So, yes, that did come up, and yes, we are going to look into that.
Okay, so, so that maybe that should have been looked at before this got put in front of us.
Well, can I answer that?
Please.
I mean, you can, you could certainly make that argument, but I think, you know, the most pressing thing, the time was an issue. We, you know, because we needed to get the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning work approved before the winter, that was what the timing of this meeting was really determined. And so, while we were having this meeting, there are some other critical needs, infrastructure, the technical infrastructures we've been talking about, that we wanted to have some funds so that we could start to address some of those issues too. We do not, at this point, have a line-by-line to the penny, this, however, every single dollar is going to be spent. But what we're looking for is authorization to use up to this amount of money for this purpose. And then, town staff and the town manager will, and any outside contractors they have to bring in, like Comcast or whatever, will, you know, determine what specifically is most important to be done, and they'll start that work.
Okay. So, I guess if, if I was to vote for this, now, I know that there's phones in here which are desperately needed, and there's in higher-speed internet. You probably would have been wise, I think, to have separated out computers and your bare necessities. So, thank you.
Todd, did you want to say something?
Yeah, part of it is going to be to get internet capability over here because we plan on eventually using this as meeting space. And we want to get internet into this building.
Would anybody else like to say? Yes, ma'am.
Jane Rice Bowie Hill. I'm glad to hear Todd say that they're going to get internet here because I think when we sat around and learned what we were going to spend the money on, I was pretty disheartened that we didn't include this building because there were meetings that I came that Heather actually, like, streamed it, and that is, is unacceptable in my eyes. I mean, I'm glad she did it, but as a towns person, we really need that out there. But I was told that we didn't have hard numbers to be able to do here, and they wanted to do more research. So, I'm assuming that come April, that will be on the ballot to get this up and running as a functional meeting place for the town so that we can stream and, and have records.
Back to the point.
Okay, all right.
Any other, you could approach the light.
Can I answer like?
Well, actually, this gentleman was, was heading for the floor.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Hello. I'm Nate Ledger. I live on Brianna Drive. I have a few points. One, I just have a question. As much as we all hate taxes, you can't give that money back, correct?
Uh, that's unclear. I, I think it would, we, the, in the main municipal association document that's kind of guiding what towns do, their opinion is that you could give the money back, but it would probably, it would require a town vote.
But it won't, it, sorry to cut you off.
No, it's fine.
It won't end up back in my pocket if you give it back to the federal government. Right? So, the money, we got to spend the mon, we, it, as much as we don't like it, it has gone through the circle and is now here in the town of Durham. Whether we want to reverse that and think it's going to come back in our paycheck, I'm sorry to tell you, not yet.
We, just to be clear, we did not apply for or ask for this money.
Okay.
It just literally shows up.
Sure. That's a whole different discussion we can have later.
Yeah, I agree.
Mike, I guess be, just by sitting here, I'm confused that, okay, I get the twenty-three thousand, that's pretty straightforward HVAC work, and you provided what we're going to install. Same with the fire department. I'm a little confused on forty-five thousand dollars, but we don't have an exact line item, like, when I do my business and I ask for a quote, I have a line item of, of what I've gotten, what I'm spending my money on. It seems here, even this, twenty-three and two thirty, thirty-four and five hundred, this is a flat forty-five thousand dollars that is there going to be, or do we have a line item that brought us to forty-five thousand dollars? Or are we guesstimating and possibly might spend more or less than that number?
Would anybody like to address that? Do you want to take a crack at that, Devin? I don't want to put you on the spot, but you did a lot of work.
I can, I can answer a couple things. So, with the computers, I finally did get a full, replace every computer quote, and it exceeds this amount. So, that's already off the table. However, with the phone, and I'll, I'll try to pull up specifics here, with the phone and internet and the firewalls and new cables that we have to put in and all that, we're looking at, and we have, we'll be looking at around twenty to twenty-five thousand, being just to get that stuff taken care of. The rest of it will go to mission critical computers and whatever we can get done until next April when we consider using more or doing something different.
And so then, Mr. Moderator, my question to you would be, how, how does the town know at what dollar amount we've reached, at what point, and how much is going to go back into the coffers to be spent elsewhere? Because just like this building, I am a member and a, a heartened member, I'm proud to be, of the American Veterans Club that's right down the road. And we too have major issues that twenty twenty set us back from fundraising and doing mission critical things for the community, that that building wasn't even, well, it's not part of the town, and I get that, but you'll be seeing my face a lot over the next, until we figure this out, because there's a lot of money there from the federal government that we can utilize gratefully. So, I just, I, and I'm getting kind of confused, and I don't want to start a controversy, but I'm hearing that we have time until twenty twenty-four, but it's mission critical, we got to do it now. And then, we don't have a itemized list of what we're spending money on. We'll let you know in April if we hit the forty, if this, this one article just seems to have a lot of gray area, gray matter.
Would anybody like to address?
Yeah, so there's, you know, and this is true of articles in any, you never have all the line ahead of detail in the article, but there's been a significant amount of work by Devin and other people on staff to, you know, get, bring in, okay, what do we think it's going to cost to, you know, update the phone system? What do we think it's going to do for the firewall and for whatever?
Sure.
There were some other numbers that were not quite as firm, like the computer numbers and so on. So, in the interest of, of, of getting the work going and being able to take care of the most mission critical issues at the town office, then that's why we're asking for some money now to get started and get well down the road of taking care of what needs to be taken care of there. The twenty twenty-four thing is related to ARPA funds in general, where basically we have until the end, December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, to, to basically say, this is what we're going to spend this money.
Use it or lose it.
And then you've got two more years to actually expend the money.
I got you. If, just to put in, if there's a better explanation before April of where we're at with that forty-five thousand?
Will there be a better explanation?
Uh, yeah, will there be?
I would expect that.
Will there be an update of?
Yep, I expect in April we would come, if, if there's another technology question on, you know, for April, if we're asking to use more ARPA funds for that, there would be a, this is what, this is what we've done so far, this is how much it costs, this is what we think still needs to be done, this is what we estimate it will cost.
And my end goal is not to, I, I, it needs to, it needs to happen, sure, get it done, get the government working. I just want to know what's going to be left over so that we can have debates on that number, and it may be ten thousand more. You know, I mean, you can, you know what I'm saying? I, I want to have a better figure on what extra funds that we have.
And that will ultimately be up to the town on, I, I don't, I honestly don't think there's going to be anything left over for this forty-five. I think it's likely that it's going to be higher than this in the long run.
Yeah.
Especially once we talk, start talking about bringing the Eureka Center up to being able to livestream and meetings from here and, and have the recording equipment here to do that. That's, that's a whole separate deal.
I appreciate it, Todd.
And Mr. Berkowitz would like to say something.
You raise a very good point, and that's why Devin brought up the fact that the hardware, computers, is the last item on the list of items that has to get done. It will expand or contract to the others that are more prioritized. Secondly, your town manager currently and in the future reports to the select board the progress of these projects and what may very well be short or over in what we're doing going forward. So, you won't have to wait to April to find out that we've got the phones installed and there's this amount of money left.
Perfect.
You won't have to wait to April to find out after we've completed the connection and the connectivity here that we are going to need something else. Any unexpended funds from these articles under ARPA, if we decide we're not going any further, has to go back to the ARPA general fund, not your tax general fund, the ARPA fund that we keep separately on the block.
Awesome.
I hope that relieves your fear.
It does, absolutely. And then, I'm assuming you have contractors and everybody already lined up? You've gotten quotes, that's why.
In some cases, we're still refining those because just today we found out that there's another opportunity, but we're not so sure we want to be the newbies on the block to use it.
Got you. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. I'm Catherine Curtis. I'm from Brianna Drive, and I just wanted to compliment that you're actually considering using this space and not considering making the town office a Taj Mahal or something. So, I think that this step, I know you are. No, no, no. No, listen, I've been in the town office late at night counting ballots, not counting ballots, but helping to finalize things, and it's a small space, they do need more room. And I compliment you that you took the action to get the furnace fixed, add a few other things in there while you're at it, so that we're not coming back every month for special meeting, and also considering using the space. So, I just wanted to put that out there, that you're asking for very reasonable things right now, so I just wanted to compliment you for that. Thank you.
Ma'am, would you like to say something?
Um, I just wanted to clarify.
Please approach the.
I'm just, I'm speaking as a budget committee member now, so I'm standing at my table.
I'm Heather Roy, Hollowell Road. Todd mentioned the utilizing this space for meeting space when we were talking about the forty-five thousand, and so I just wanted to be really clear, when Jane came up and addressed that, that that forty-five thousand dollars, my understanding is that that doesn't have anything to do with bringing this space up to speed in terms of the funds that it will take to do that. That's something that we're going to come back to. So, I just want to make sure that people, yeah, okay. And then, there was something else, but I can't remember what it was. And I just want to really say thank you very much for your questions and your, your request for detail. I'm on the budget committee, and I'm usually the one that's like right there with my thumb on top of it, asking for those details. And I kind of get a hard time because of that, so I appreciate that I'm not the only one in town that really wants to see those numbers. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Phyllis Brandon, I live on Brookside Drive. I'm just wondering what, and what the accounting would look like at the end of each of these projects?
Mr. Berkowitz, are you, the what, ma'am?
What the, what the accounting would look like?
I think it's fairly straightforward. Starting amount, itemized expenditures by contract servicing invoicing, balance remaining period, which we can't go over, which you authorized. And your new cap manager follows the basic same things where he's been now in his current business as well as the business here, so that that can become public knowledge and that's reported to our select board. Let's assume we executed one of the contracts tomorrow and paid out the forty-five thousand, and I'd say we executed forty-five thousand, it's working, zero balance.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just one additional comment to that. The ARPA program itself has some pretty rigorous documentation requirements and that's, that's, so, to, to establish that it's eligible for ARPA funding. So, that's something that, you know, like Janet and Jared will have to be on top of to make sure that we're following all those requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Terrific. Anybody else like to speak on this article? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to a vote. To see if the town will vote to appropriate forty-five thousand dollars from ARPA funds received by the town for communication and information technology upgrades for the town office, public works, and fire station. Now, if you want to appropriate that money, please raise your green cards. If you do, okay, put them down. If you do not want to appropriate that money, please raise your green cards. Okay. An overwhelming majority has voted to appropriate forty-five thousand dollars from coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, AKA American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds, received by the town from the federal government for the following project, communication and information technology upgrades for town office, public works, fire station. So, we'll move on to Article Six. To see if the town will vote to appropriate sixteen thousand dollars from coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, AKA American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds, received by the town from the federal government for the following project, GIS tax mapping work. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Who's we accept Article Six in percentage?
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article Six. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Hi, everyone, Joe Roy, Pinkham Brook Road. Just kind of wondering, similar to the last one I questioning, with the sixteen thousand dollars, are we looking at purchasing an ARC license? If so, what program? And is that a single-use license or a continuous-use license? Or are we looking at having a third-party digitize the data layers for us?
Does anybody have a good answer?
I will start, and then I will ask the moderator to call upon Alan Plummer, our code enforcement officer, to finish it. The issue will be third-party vendor, and that includes two years of updating as well. It isn't just acquisition, but it's also servicing. Purpose of maps are critical to not only knowing what we're doing with our zoning, areas within those zones, and our code enforcement, as well as preparation for our tax bills. And I know we must talk about tax bills, but if we delay in our tax billing because of inefficient records, handkeeping records and maps that involve updated, we effectively run ourselves into a position where cash flow out is greater than cash flow in. So, effectively, this is also going to allow the improvement for our tax billing. And one other benefit that comes with this is the number of calls that we get from real estate agents about different parcels of land effectively can be entered now at our website once this is on board. But I'd like Alan to come forward, if you would, wherever you are, Alan, and please finish off what I have started.
We'll move on.
Alan Plummer, I'm the code enforcement officer for Durham. George the Burge, who's the town planner, was tasked to seek out some parties that can fulfill our tax map requirement. So, if you didn't know, up until twenty twenty, we had Mylar tax maps, which are literally pieces of plastic that are drawn on, erased, and updated that way. And we had John O'Donnell and Associates Tax Company that took care of our tax map for us. So, they would update them, update them in that way. We now have those Mylars actually rolled up in a case in our office. They're no longer doing it, the person that was doing their tax maps is, is ill and will not be doing that any longer, and the company is stopping doing that. So, we haven't had any updates since then, so no, no tax map updates since then. We have a record of those map changes that have occurred, and those occur on a regular daily basis. The number of calls that I get as the code enforcement officer about boundaries and my property and can I do this and how much road frontage is constant all, all day long. So, we don't have those updates. We needed to find somebody, there is nobody. So, O'Donnell and Associates had numerous towns, fifteen, twenty towns that they did that for. All of those towns are looking for map people now. So, what George did was researched tax GIS companies. So, GIS is a step beyond what Mylar tax maps are. It's GIS, so, positioning through satellites and so forth, and maps would show up with better detail or better specifics than a Mylar adjusted tax map. So, he looked into those companies, came up with two companies that were more reasonable than others. We could spend many thousands of dollars to do that, and there are some towns that have the funds to do that. Two companies came up that were reasonable, and we would get far beyond what we currently have, or, well, what we currently had. And those were Spatial Alternatives, Inc., and ARC GIS, a company out of Portland, and I'm not positive of the name of the company, but we looked at those two companies, the tax assessor, myself, and George the Burge. We looked at all of the things that they had to offer, we decided that Spatial Alternatives was the company that best fit our needs. The other company had lots of bells and whistles, but we might not actually use all those things, and, and we didn't see, why would we pay for that stuff? So, we would use that company, they would apply our tax maps to the existing layers that they had for data for satellite images and those kind of things, adjust them appropriately as they needed to be adjusted. And those would be hosted on their website. So, as Mitch said, it's a two or three year, was it two, Mitch, or three years contract? So, two years, we would pay for updates for three years, I'm sorry. I was a teacher in my, my life. I hate to talk to you people like that. So, we would pay for two years of updates, and that, that encompasses the things that we get on a daily basis. So, we would turn those in at a specific time during the year, they would do those updates, and they would show up on our system. So, not only do we have, would we have those digital images online to use, but they'll print us out regular taps, tax maps like we currently have. So, we'll get paper copies. You don't need a computer to go to see the tax maps and things like that. You can come in, just like you can come in now and see the tax maps, and we'd put those on PDF online, so you could open those up and view them. But you could also go on the computer and look at them and see where your property is, and look at a satellite view, and see where your house sits compared to your property lines. So, the bang for the buck going with this, I would say normally, small towns can't afford that, really. I came from another small town where I used to be the code officer, and they can't afford to do that. Unfortunately, they use O'Donnell as well, so they're going to have to do something. Having the money come in a, in a bunch like that and saying, you can use this on capital improvements that will help people access your information from online, and they don't have to come into the office and that kind of stuff, is really a, a boost. of stuff, is really a boost. So there's a bunch of other things in that, in the program, that we'll be able to use as town staff for finding out who the abutters are very quickly, cutting down on my time, looking for the abutters, finding their addresses. I got to tell you, the way I do things now is I was shocked when I got to town, and I have to do it that way. It just blows my mind that I have to look at those kind of things. It's just really, really slow, and it takes a lot of time to do everything I have to do in this job. So I was very excited to hear that we might be able to get GIS mapping for the town. I think it's a great step. It's the way of the future 10 or 15 years ago. So it's great that we're going there now. Take it. Did I answer all of your questions? Yep?
Did I answer your question, sir?
Yeah, I have an addition.
I'm sorry.
I have an addition.
Okay, please.
Yeah, Joe Roy, Pinkham Brook Road. I just want to echo kind of what Alan was saying. I fully support the use of GIS. I use it every single day with mapping. If we're trying to move into the 20th and 21st century, we should probably digitize these data. I was just curious about whether we were having a third-party do it or done internally, because the licensing is very expensive, and there's a very large learning curve to being in with it. So I'm happy to hear we're considering it, and I think it's a really good thing for our town moving forward.
Sure. Thank you very much. Ma'am?
Heather Roy, Hollowell Road. This comment is, as a Budget Committee member, I am an advocate of this. I just think it's really important when we're moving in this direction to make sure that residents understand that this becomes a budget item in terms of the subscription cost. So that's been touched on, but I just want... Yeah. So after the two years, that cost no longer can be used by ARPA funds to be paid for. That becomes a budgetary item that the town will have as part of its annual budget going forward. And then, my comment, or my question, rather, as a resident, is I've heard about a lot of various ways that this is going to save money by cutting down on the hours that town staff has to spend doing the work that they're doing, which is great. And then, I'm also curious if this will allow more accurate acreage, if there's like measurements that are available through this. Because in a recent application through the planning board, the lot was being taxed as 41 acres. When they had their survey done, it came back as 52 acres. And so I'm wondering if that is a potential avenue that will create additional revenue for the town. Thank you.
Does anybody have an answer to that? Yes, Mr. Berkowitz?
Two, three points. First, one that you didn't raise. The third vendor was $21,000 a year. So you need to put that in comparison, and that's for their preparation. And that didn't include annual subscription. To your two questions that were raised in general, we will have to wait and see the public impact. But on a daily basis, we'd probably get five to six calls from realtors across the United States, asking about properties that may be for sale, or specific properties that may be in the process of sale, as Alan has pointed out. There's a second part to your question.
Will the GIS produce accurate lot sizes?
To our understanding, within a few inches of each lot line, they're supposed to be dead-on centered. They go ahead and look back, as Alan, if you want. The accuracy and the annual updating also goes to the issue of how quickly and accurately we get out our tax bills, which in turn affects our cash flow, which in turn may help save us from having to borrow a tax anticipation note. These are all tied together. They're just not standalone items. Alan, please?
I'm glad you brought up the parcel measurements. So to keep the cost down, that might be something that comes up later, and you could advocate for further spending for that. However, to keep the cost down, if we said, "We need you to look at our deeds and analyze them and put those measurements into the map," that's a humongous fund. That's a lot more cost. So we didn't include that at all.
I wondered if, like, because when you look at Google Earth, you can see a house proportionate to the size, if that like automatically made the reference land around it also the case, and would maybe be more accurate?
It's going to be more accurate. They're going to stretch the satellite imagery to match our contours and roads and things like that. It will be more accurate. And I think the great thing is, starting when we start with the company, and a new lot comes in with the deed, we're going to... We will ask for that, and we have those, but they're in our files, and none of those measurements from the deed transfer to our tax maps. That was the hardest thing for me when I looked at our tax maps and went, "Where's the measurements? Where did they go?" Anything coming in after we get this company, they will scan the deed, and the measurements will be on that parcel. So whenever they add that parcel to the GIS layer, the measurements will be on there. So, and it will be the measurements from the deed. So that's a humongous step for the town. Yep.
Ms. Roy, does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Great, thank you.
No, just real quick. Because of the future tax implications that may come up, what is this annual subscription per year? And is there any way we can use these ARPA funds to pay, say, 10 years in advance, so that it doesn't come back on the Durham taxpayers?
Good question.
If we're only at 16,000, can we pay 10 years in advance?
Good question. Any answers?
We've already taken that philosophy and added to your subscription to the $10,000 preparation.
Oh, great. So this is expensive.
To answer the question further, the likelihood is no, because at some point, it becomes a burden to the local taxpayer, and you can't replace those dollars with ARPA funds. So by 2026, we will be pretty well extended of the ARPA funds. You will be taking this on on an ongoing basis through your local taxes.
And so I guess what is the annual subscription? What do we need to cover?
One in 3,000, depending on the activity. If you've got a lot of subdivisions or new lots being developed, obviously, there's a lot more work. If you had a no-growth community, no changes to speak of, you probably don't have as much.
As much to do.
So that's why there's the range, and we took the top range, because it is a very busy community.
But even at $3,000 a year, divide that by however many taxpayers, you're looking at an increase of what, on the property tax?
I won't begin to go pennies for pennies.
But it'll be... It's not... Won't be significant.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Another good question that I can answer, if that's okay?
Yep, please.
So the annual cost, if we have a low year where nothing's split off, or little stuff is split off, they said they can take that, and if we have a light year, we can say, "Hey, we'd like you to do these parcels. We'd like you to add the measurements for these parcels for that year." So take this section and do that extensive research into the deed, and they'll do that section of town with the parcel square foot, the square line footage. So that's awesome. Oh, I was going to say something else. Forgot. Standing in front of all these people.
That's all right. If it comes...
Yeah.
You can speak again.
Great.
Yes, sir?
Joe Roy, Pinkham Brook Road. Same question as the guy before me. He already answered that. So I guess my question would be a clarification. It sounds like from what Mr. Plummer is saying, this is just digitizing our existing data and not reassessing the information that goes in, because your maps can be accurate, but in the example of surveys that aren't done properly or something like that, it's not going to make any adjustments. So it sounds like this isn't doing deed research, or reassessing, or redeveloping the map. It's just digitizing our existing map. Just looking for clarification.
That's clearly accurate. Otherwise, you would do...
Yeah, yeah, correct. That's just what I was curious about. Awesome. And you said, so it sounds like it's an initial cost of $10,000, and then $1,000 to $3,000 annually, depending on activity?
Yes, and the first two years of subscription and updating is built into the $16,000 warrant article that you're going with.
Yeah. Round numbers just always look suspicious on a bunch of stuff.
Mr. Plummer, I think I thought of what he was going to say.
Yes. Remember that we pay a fairly substantial amount now for John O'Donnell to pencil in our maps on the plastic. And it's probably on par with the annual cost for this. So we currently pay that anyway.
Yes, ma'am?
That's actually what I was going to say. We're already paying for some of the service anyway. And we could also, if we know it's going to be $6,000 a year, say they go up a lot, we could put that into our fee structure. When people ask for subdivision fees, we could put that cost into the fee structure to help supplement the cost of doing it.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Yes, yes, sir.
Eastern Moderator, Brian Lanwood, Robert Road. Since it seems like there's going to be a little bit of money on the table, has any consideration or discussion been put into expanding the GIS system past tax maps into maybe utilities throughout the town that may help DPW?
Would anybody like to answer?
I can only say for the... That has not come up. I don't know if separately, you know, the Public Works Director and the Town Manager had conversations about that, but it's not something that was brought to the board.
At this point, we wanted to get the foundation in place. That will be at the discretion of future leadership and the public.
Great, thank you.
But honestly, if that's something that you think would be a good idea, I encourage you to contact the select board.
Yeah, I think that's an example of what I referenced earlier. There'll be some... We'll have some public opportunities for, hey, what else could we do with this, with the remaining ARPA money? And, you know, that might be a great, you know, thing to do.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Plummer?
Sorry, I have something to add to that. So we had talked about that. There are further things that can happen with this particular software package. So we could do alternate layers, different layers and things that could affect public works as well. So that's a possibility, and...
Yes, sir?
Joe Roy, Pinkham Brook Road. I guess one clarifying question, then. You know, kind of compounding on what the previous gentleman had said, GIS is a huge iceberg, and we're using a snowflake on the tip of it. So there's a lot of really great tools that can be used here. This is digitizing our tax maps. Is it also digitizing our current resource layers, our zoning layers, and the stuff like that that is currently drawn on the tax maps?
Good question. Is there any correction?
The answer is yes.
Perfect.
All right. Would anybody else like to speak on the question?
I have one more question.
Yeah, please.
About that. Does that then become the official town map? The way the ordinance reads, it says the way it's defined on the town map. So does that then, when you zoom in and blow it up, and you can see the line of resource protection, does that then become the official town map?
Yes.
Just maybe. It would be subject to a town vote, just like on the last town meeting, where one of the votes was, "Do you accept the new updated town map?"
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have to go through that vote.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and I'm unsure about which would be used. So right now, we have one that's voted, signed by the clerk. It's on the wall. That is official. I think we will have a printed copy. We'll have printed copies of those. I don't know legally if that is the official copy, and if there's an anomaly when you're looking at it and you're doing some analysis, whatever.
Okay, sorry. That doesn't have to do with the passing of the laws. I appreciate you're getting in the lead. Sorry.
Clarify one thing on that, though. Even the official map we have is a starting point. It's not to the level of detail. Oftentimes, to make some decisions that need to be made, it's oftentimes, you have to go to on-the-ground survey work to actually confirm, you know, what you think the map is showing. Because it's like trying to build a house on a crayon sketch, you know? It's just not enough detail. Have you done that?
Mr. Berkowitz?
Excellent question. This does not relieve the surveyor, the seller, or the buyer's surveyor, of their obligation and duty to properly assess, not assess, but to measure the lot lines accurately, and do the research that is necessary. With a court of law, the GIS may be part of the evidence, but I think that the preponderance of evidence comes from the on-the-ground work, as the chairman's pointed out.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, very well. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on the issue? Yes, sir?
Tom Maloney, Silver Road. Question is, the initial $10,000, I've heard spoken of, is that work that's done for that amount of money, at the end of the subscription, going to be something that we can take with us if we go to another company? Is it going to be something that they're going to have sole possession of?
Good question. Does anybody have an answer?
If I may, and subject to Alan's approval, generally, we're paying for that map when it comes out that year. That becomes the town's property. If the software that they're using is proprietary, the new company may have to use their software and convert it to their software. But generally speaking, we own the map that we pay for.
Mr. Plummer, do you have more to add?
Yeah, and we own the data. It's the town's data. It's not... The company does not retain any rights to that. It's definitely, even just the GIS data is our data. And we can remove that whenever we decide to do that, and go to a different company, although that may not be an easy thing, about conversion and so forth.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on the question? Okay, seeing nobody. You are going to vote to see if the town will vote to appropriate $16,000 from ARPA funds received by the town from the federal government for the following project: GIS tax mapping work. If you would like to appropriate that money, please raise your card. Okay, please put them down. If you would like to not appropriate that money, please raise your card. Okay? A large majority having voted, the town will appropriate $16,000 from coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, AKA American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds, received by the town from the federal government, for the following project: GIS tax mapping work. And that brings us to the end of the business. Is there any other business to come before the meeting? Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to say thank you to Mitch for being here.
Yes, actually. This may very well be Mitch's last...
Yeah, I would acknowledge on that a lot, if I had a lot more time. But I... This has obviously been a very tough period for the town of Durham, and we still have a learning curve to go with our new town manager. But Mitch has been a godsend, and I can't imagine what the last two months would have been without you, Mitch. And very grateful for the work you've done. And I think, I think we may have finished him off, though. He said he's probably not taking any more interim town managers. But he's still going to consult on searches and things of that sort. So, but really, the town owes you a great debt. He put in way more time than we actually contracted for, and so we're just very, very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
He's going to be the next manager.
Moderator, will we adjourn?
Okay, and I want to make a quick announcement after we adjourn. After we adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. This is one that we are not able to debate, so let's take a vote. Everyone who would like to adjourn, please raise your hand. Everyone who would not like to adjourn, please raise your hand. The meeting is adjourned, signed a die, which means completely and forever. And I just want to mention that there's a candidate for main senate here, Betty Sheets, and she's in the back of the room, and I'm sure she'd be happy to talk to anybody who'd like to speak with her. Thank you all for coming.